Good afternoon and welcome to a joint meeting of the Burbank City Council and the esteemed Burbank Police Commission. Today is October 1st, 2024. Before I go on, I'd like to invite Commissioner Paul McKenna to come before the council. Councilor Anthony, would you like to read the disciplinary act? I'm kidding. I recognize that there's a birthday today, so I'm hoping that everyone can help me in publicly embarrassing Commissioner McKenna by singing "Happy Birthday."
I paint my shirt and my face.
On account of three, one, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Paul. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Play ball.
Well, that was a fantastic meeting. Thank you for coming, everyone. I would now, boy, we're getting wacky this late in the year, right? I would like to now introduce our esteemed police commissioners and welcome them to the meeting. So when I call your name, if you want to come up, maybe you can all line up at the podium so we can get a great shot, PIO team, so everyone can see our commissioners. First, we have Commissioner Ann Wenzel. Ann, are you here? Come on up. And then we have Commissioner Mike Chapman. Commissioner Leela Farusen. Commissioner Mike Elman. We also have Commissioner Paul McKenna. Our Commissioner and Vice Chair Rama Kokobian. And our Commission President James Combs. Now that I've publicly embarrassed you all enough, thank you so much for your service and for being here tonight. You're welcome to retake your seats. Before we begin, I'd like to note our public comment procedures this evening. Speaking times will be limited to either three minutes, two minutes, or one minute, and will be determined at the beginning of each public comment period based on how many cards are received and how many callers are in the queue. For the study session public comment periods, no additional public comment cards or calls will be taken once public comment period begins. If you'd like to comment on either tonight's, on either of tonight's study session items, please call right now at 818-238-3335. You heard right, Constantine. That's three threes and one five. You will be placed in a queue until the study session comment period begins. I'd also like to note that we have interpretive assistance for those speaking Spanish. If you'd like assistance from our interpretive services, please see Chief Michael Albanese over there in the corner, and he'll hook you right up. We will begin this evening's meeting with a study session on two items related to Burbank Police Department. The first item is a report from the Office of Independent -- it wasn't that funny of a joke. I'm gonna miss you, Mike. The first item is a report from the Office of Independent Review Group monitoring the Burbank Police Department. At this time, I welcome, go figure, Burbank Police Chief Michael Albanese to commence the presentation.
So, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, I'm going to introduce the Office of Independent Review, OIR. We have, the city has had a relationship with them since 2012, when the city attorney's office onboarded them contractually, and their first report out was at the end, I believe it was November of 2012. This is a group of folks that are truly subject matter experts when it comes to policing, and they do a critical analysis, a deep dive of how we operate. They provide constructive feedback that we take heed to, and it has been a good relationship as far as what input they have provided to us, and that is why I believe today that we are a police department that other departments want to replicate. So I will introduce Michael Janaco, who will introduce his staff.
Welcome back, Mr. Janaco.
How are you, Mayor Schultz?
Long live the dream.
Council, it's so good to see you all again, city leadership and the commission. It's great to be before you. My name is Mike Janaco, and I will be just kicking off this workshop and discussion. We're back again for another year, and accompanied by our presentation this afternoon or evening is a report that was presented and is available for you and your community as part of the agenda package. We're not going to go over the whole report, obviously, in the limited time we have available, but I did want to make some sort of high-level remarks and ask my colleagues also to get a little bit more into the weeds with regard to some of the issues that they tackled this year. My colleagues, by the way, are folks that have been with me for quite a while now. To my immediate right is Steve Connolly, who has been with me from, with this project since its inception, and then Teresa Magula, who has been here five or six years now on, on, on the project. We've been doing this work for over 20 years. Prior to that, I was a former federal prosecutor, and I just wanted to maybe start my remarks by talking about contextually where we are in 2024 as opposed to where we were in 2011. And where we were in 2011, I'm not even sure that Chief Albanese was here. Were you here yet?
I was.
Just about starting, yeah. Yeah, full year. In any event, that was a time of crisis for the police department. There were concerns that were being raised internally and externally about some of the conduct involving former and current Burbank Police Department members. As a result of that crisis, there ended up being a new leadership team brought in, and Chief Albanese was part of that, as well as Chief Kremmons. And we were also brought in, at that time, it was really touch-and-go about where that police department was going and what that department was going to be looking like, and whether or not there was going to be forced intervention, consent decrees, monitoring by the U.S. Department of Justice or the State Department of Justice, investigations by the FBI. So things were in disarray is probably an understatement. Since that time, though, I think that there has been a significant change and reform arced in the police department. We're pleased to be part of it and be able to report on it and be able to assist with formulating recommendations, but I am not so arrogant to think that we were the large moving factor behind that. It was the leadership of the department that was largely responsible for turning that ship around and doing it quickly and doing it deliberately, yet doing it deliberatively with a plan. And as a result of that, your police department is way different than it was a dozen years ago, for sure, and that's to the good. As the chief indicated, it's gotten so that our work becomes more difficult as the monitor, as the auditor for your agency, because we have to, there's no more low-hanging fruit to look at or to address. We really have to, we're really looking at oversight more at a graduate level, if you will, as opposed to Oversight 101. When we engage initially with new law enforcement agencies, there is a lot of low-hanging fruit that we end up, you know, picking and writing about. Those days are gone in the city of Burbank, because what we're talking about here is really some fine-tuning. That doesn't mean it's not important to continue to improve and to continue to think about new ways of doing things. We have been through a lot over these past 13 years that are external to the police department but impact the police department in significant ways. The George Floyd murder, the protests in this city that were largely peaceful, almost entirely peaceful, kudos to your community, with regard to the murder of George Floyd, and coming out from under that, the dialogue and discussion about reinventing, reimagining, and rethinking the way in which public safety is performed in a particular community. Burbank was part of that discussion. So we have moved in a large and forward way, and so much so that I have to brag on the department and do brag upon the department, I'll just give you a concrete example of what I'm talking about as maybe indicia or an illustration of how far the department has moved forward. A couple months ago, we had some discussions with two newer clients of ours. Those include the city of Modesto and the county of Santa Clara Sheriff's Office. And those agencies have been challenged with regard to coming up with a robust way in which to review deadly force incidents, a robust way in which to review uses of force in general. And they don't have, in their view, and they admittedly so, don't have a very good system for reviewing that force. It's not as robust as they hoped it would be, but they're looking for examples and illustrations and models to follow. So we were able to persuade two delegations from those jurisdictions to come to Burbank and spend an afternoon with the chief and his people, learning about how Burbank Police Department reviews force, and then taking that information and hopefully importing it to their jurisdictions in a helpful way. So I think that's maybe most recent and maybe the best example of sort of the theme that I'm, that I'm propagating this afternoon or evening, and that is, things are good, we can't take our eye off the ball, we have to continue to do this. We have had agencies and leadership in other jurisdictions who have come to us from time to time and say, to say, when are you going to be done? When are you going to be done? And we can, you know, quit hearing from your audit, our auditors. And, and the answer to that is, unlike the US DOJ model, where after five years they think they're going to be done and will affix things, DOJ itself has found that that doesn't work. This has to be a continual process, and I think it's important in the same way that you have regular financial audits of your organization, your city, your functions. Those same kind of qualitative audits, in my view, need to continue to happen, because there's nothing like an audit to keep people thinking about new ways of doing things and to keep people on their toes. The other thing that I would say, and I've said this, it's, it's almost like a broken record, but I'll say it because it's true, which is, from the beginning of our relationship with Burbank's police leadership, we have had nothing but cooperation and an active listening and active participation in our review processes, and that continues to this day. Without that access to not only documents and reports and body-worn camera footage and other investigative material, as well as access to the people who make decisions in Burbank, we would be nowhere, and we wouldn't have any insight to share with you. And so to that, to that degree, we continue to flourish in that regard. Just a little bit of a brief summary or rehash of what we're all about. The four bullet points that are on that slide, critical incidents, uses of force, allegations of misconduct resulting in investigations and vehicle pursuits, those have been the four meat and potatoes of our work since our inception. I think vehicle pursuits were added on somewhere in the middle there, but those four have been regularly reported on by us as part of our regular work on an annual basis. Pursuant to the wisdom and suggestions and recommendations of this body a few years ago, we were also asked to do an independent audit of one aspect of policing that isn't within our ordinary scope of work, and so we choose, we work with the department and choose a particular issue that would not come within our regular auditing perspective. And in this case, last year was responding to mental health, this year was taking a look at how well the RIPA data or Racial Identity Profiling Act data is accumulated by the department. And Teresa and Steve will be talking about that in more detail in a minute. And then finally, our public reporting is, I think, also, along with our recommendations, also a key function of the work we do. It's still unfortunate, but, but true to say that with a few exceptions, Burbank is one of the few entities cities that has a robust IPA on, on its, as part of its response, as part of its functions, and wish there would be more, but the fact that you all have existed sort of uniquely positioned yourself with an independent police auditor for over a decade says a lot to leadership's interest in transparency, leadership's interest in providing a window into the police world for your community through our public reporting and our presentations that most other jurisdictions in LA County do not have the opportunity to enjoy. And so with that, let me know the next slide, please. This again is part of our protocol. We take a look at actual cases that are completed and use those cases to get us to insights. We don't just sort of look at the policies and think, well, that's enough. It's actually how the policies are applied through actual case investigations that's the most important. So we're actually looking at actual cases in order to do that analysis. As I indicated, BPD has continued to provide us full access to information, and we gain nothing but cooperation from the leadership whenever we do our projects. Next slide, please. This is the slide that sort of sums our key findings in this report, and at this point, I'll turn to my colleague Steve Connolly to continue the conversation. Steve.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, or good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor Perez and members of the council. I want to start by saying thank you for scheduling this special section. I think we went on at about 9:15 last year as part of the regular council agenda. And I, just speaking personally, I'm a lot sprightlyer at 4:15 than, than 9:15, so we thank you for this, this new structure. Mike has obviously provided you with an overview of our relationship with the department and kind of the overarching mission that we have in terms of our oversight responsibilities. We wanted to take a few minutes to talk about some of the particulars of this year's report from a substantive perspective, and then obviously, we, we are very much welcoming of, of questions that you might have in terms of deeper dives about specific aspects of the report or specific cases that get mentioned, et cetera. So the big picture assessment is that, that as Mike has said, we, we have a very high regard for the way that the police department's internal review systems have evolved over the years. The department goes well beyond what is required of it under state procedures, and they really have committed to a robust internal review process. And we are always happy to, to affirm that. It's been true for a few years now, and they're, they're continuing to modify and make adjustments, and as, as laws changes and public expectations change, nobody's resting on their laurels, but it is a process of continuous improvement, which I think is, is reflected in the culture. And again, we have a high regard for these, these systems to the point where we, we use them as models when we are offering examples to other agencies that we work with. We did have 14 recommendations this year with regard to specific things that come up in the course of our review of, of particular incidents or cases. Some of them are policy-related, some of them are more systemic, and the department, to its credit, kind of digests those every year. I think they, they make a formal response to your council as far as whether they think it's feasible and whether they're going to adopt it and what the changes are going to look like. And we have found over the years that there has been a high level of agreement and acceptance and responsiveness to some of the things that we've suggested, and, you know, we're, we're offering these ideas in, in ways that are meant to be constructive, and, and I think the department has embraced them in that spirit. In terms of our, our categories that we work with, one of them, as Mike said, is critical incidents. There was an officer-involved shooting in 2023, which is the audit cycle period that we're talking about. That, that incident, which I'm sure all of you are very familiar with, is not part of this report because the various processes associated with it are not complete yet, so we will be, we did have the opportunity to get briefed by the department and kind of sit in on some of their initial internal reviews, but we won't be delving into that more fully and, and reporting out on the department's full assessment and responses of it until all of that stuff gets finalized. What we did have, again, along this same slightly delayed cycle, there was an in custody death that occurred in January of 2022, and by the time all of the different review processes were finalized, including the department's administrative investigation, it kind of rolled into 2023, which, which meant that the incident and the department's review became part of this audit period. This was only the second jail-related death case in the 13, 14 years that we have been working with the department. There was a suicide several years ago that led to some systemic reforms in the department in terms of how they structure, literally physically structure the cells in, in response to what had happened there. And there were some similar dynamics here insofar as the department really attempted to use this case as, as an opportunity to say, okay, what could we have been doing differently or better? This is never a result that we want when somebody is in our care and custody. It was a 48-year-old male who was in custody for a little bit more than 24 hours. He died of a variety of medical problems. There was no, no problematic actions on the part of the, of the department in terms of their involvement, use of force, nothing like that related to the death. However, that said, the, the department took a deep dive into this person's entire time in custody, beginning with his arrest, and they kind of rewound the tape and looked at every aspect of it and looked at each employee or officer, jail staff member, supervisor who had some involvement in, in the processing or handling or monitoring of this individual. And they ended up opening up a pretty significant administrative investigation in terms of potential policy shortcomings and places where they felt like the depart, the employees could have done things differently or better. Again, no malice involved, no active misconduct, and there were a lot of mitigating circumstances, but at the same time, the department found a lot of specific things in terms of individual performance, but maybe more importantly, structural things, protocol things that they adjusted. We talk about it in a little bit more detail in the report. But again, when, when something like this happens, it's obviously the, the worst kind of result and exactly what the department doesn't want. So that's, that's a tough starting place, but ideally, it is going to be an opportunity to learn and adjust and try to reduce the likelihood that something like this will happen again, and that was certainly our impression of how this was handled. We also look at misconduct, allegations of misconduct and the ways that those are investigated. Those include citizen complaints and also internal investigations that are initiated by Burbank when members of the leadership team become aware of, of problems or shortcomings by the officers. So we take a random sampling. We don't look at all of them, but we have certain kinds of cases that we look at automatically, and we kind of pull those, and then we get a sampling of the others. For example, we always look at any case that involved an allegation of bias, discriminatory policing. That's obviously a very sensitive subject, so if that is part of the complaint, even if it's just a peripheral aspect of, of an arrest that somebody's mad about for three other reasons, the department is ideally going to be focusing on that and making sure that bias is not a factor here. We ask for all of those cases to make sure that the department is continuing to be rigorous in its approach to this, this very kind of sensitive issue. There were only five of those allegations in the past year. None of them were sustained, and we agreed with all of those findings, and again, had a couple of thoughts about the, the review process and ways that the department, which does a pretty good job with it, can continue to be as proactive as possible. There are some agencies, these, these cases are very, very difficult to prove, because so much of it comes down to, you know, the mindset of the officers, it's subjective and in the absence of, of an admission of, you know, racial discrimination or bias. It can be really, really hard to pin down. At its best, the department's investigations don't just take the officer's word for it. They, they really do assess the reasonableness and, and of some of the other factors and considerations that are kind of race-neutral or bias-neutral and, and that would explain the officer's behavior, and that's the kind of thing that I think agencies ideally are going to be doing, taking these things seriously and really being thoughtful about them. In terms of other key takeaways from, from our assessment of the investigations as a whole, I would say, one of the things, and Mike and I have been here a long time, and this actually goes even, even goes back to the time when, when Teresa joined us, when Teresa was first here with us five or six years ago, the, the police department didn't have body worn cameras. That has been a sea change in the, and I know that was a long time coming, and there was some back and forth thing about how that would work. It is obviously the, the wave of the future, and I think a public expectation, but in terms of the practical effects of it, it has had an enormous impact on the conclusiveness of investigations. The officers are very good about complying with the policy, and that evidence is, is very much determinative. A lot of cases that used to be this person's version versus that person's version, and we don't really know what to tell you, but it's not sustained. Now, it's much easier for the department to reach definitive outcomes, which it does, and they also do it in a pretty timely fashion, which is another, I think, improvement that's driven by that, the effectiveness of that evidence. And then the last thing I would mention before turning it over, one of the things that we, we are especially struck by in, in with the Burbank Police Department are the notification letters that go out to the complainants. They are, get, it seems like they get more and more thorough and detailed every year in terms of providing things without violating any officer rights and, you know, confidentiality protections. They take the complaints very seriously and really do engage and make an effort to explain exactly what the basis for the outcome was, as opposed to the bare minimum requirement, which we are still seeing in some agencies, which is, thank you for your complaint, our officers didn't do anything wrong. Love, the sheriff. And, and that's obviously not super satisfying to somebody who has, you know, genuinely felt aggrieved by the way that, that he or she was treated by the department. So we think those letters really, again, are an example of a model of how the, the department is going beyond the, the minimum requirements to, to provide some, some real meaning when it comes to this process and the people that are, are engaging with it. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Teresa to talk about use of force and vehicle pursuits. And again, we certainly look forward to any questions that you might have about the report.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor exited, but she'll be back soon, I'm sure. So I want to talk about another piece that's kind of a critical component of the work that we do. That's evaluations of use of force cases. So in the calendar year 2023, the Burbank Police Department had 55 reportable uses of force. That's very comparable to what they've had in previous years. We take a sample of those, as Steve mentioned, similar to how we do with the complaints of misconduct, and this year, we looked at 14 of those cases. So we're looking at kind of the whole range of uses of force. It's things from kind of your low, lower level uses of force, like a control hold or a team takedown, and it ranges all the way, of course, to some of the critical incidents that we sometimes review, as well as uses of less lethal tools. So the use of the 40-millimeter deployment of a canine, use of a TASER device. And we look at that case from start to finish, all of the evidence related to it. Mike mentioned kind of at the top of this that Burbank is, is kind of our show pony when it comes to how to review uses of force. They do a really exceptional job with their Critical Incident Review Board of looking at an incident from start to finish. There are many agencies we work with that look only at the moment in time that force was used. They're not very interested in looking at kind of the holistic picture of how did the officers get involved in this? What was the, what were the tactics that may have led to force being used? And all the way to nuances like, did the officers use profanity during the course of this, and did they have to? So Chief Albanese is very keen on that. And so they're looking at all the different pieces, and we feel that they do a really exceptional job of that. Having said that, of course, we wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't still find a few little nuances and areas to consider. Three of these, three of these are items that were raised in our last audit cycle, and that is less a factor of the department being willing to adopt those recommendations and more a factor of the fact that the audit cycle kind of bounces a full, almost a full calendar year. So policing doesn't stop, obviously, and by the time our recommendations come to the table and the department has adopted them, a number of cases have already occurred. So we're seeing a little bit of overlap in the sense of our recommendations are not quite caught up to the policing activity that's happening. One of those is the idea that officers are required when One of those is the idea that officers are required, when it's practicable to do so, to provide a verbal warning that they are going to use force, and then to give that subject some time to comply, to consider whether compliance is something that they like to do before force is used upon them. That isn't always something that's possible, given fluid circumstances. But we saw a number of cases where the department itself identified that an officer could and probably should have issued a warning, and that warning didn't come. We saw enough of those cases that while the officers had individual retraining and some remedial action around their lack of a warning, we thought that perhaps this showed that the department entirely might need some retraining or reminders around that requirement to issue the warning, and the department has agreed with that. We also saw some concerns, again, around the supervisor's involvement in a use of force. We would typically like to see a supervisor directing the uses of force rather than they themselves engaging in that. Of course, that's sometimes a factor of staffing, right? So the supervisor just is just who happens to be on scene and who happens to have the tools that are needed. We also saw some cases where a supervisor who was directly involved in the use of force was doing the use of force review on the scene. And for some pretty obvious reasons, that's not an ideal practice. Again, points more to staffing and that difficulty of getting an uninvolved supervisor on scene when staffing is already pretty tight here in the city. And the department is committed to, you know, doing its best when it comes to those different pieces. And again, they are always reviewing the incident on multiple levels, so it doesn't just stop at that supervisor who may have been involved. We saw some concerns around TASER deployments. Again, certainly an area that we find and the department has agreed to just reconsider some of the policies and the ways that the TASER device is used and the training that comes along with those changes to policy. And then a net new one this year was the use of closed fist strikes. So we saw two incidents where an officer delivered one or more closed fist strikes to a subject. These come with some significant risk, both of injury to the subject, but also injury to an officer. So if an officer uses that and damages his or her dominant hand, and then were to need to use that hand to deliver a different type of force, you know, we see some challenges with that and some safety concerns. So the department has committed to taking a look at both the training and the policy around use of closed fist strikes and and determine what's the most appropriate level, when to use them, if at all, and how to properly train those for their officer safety. The other topic that we look at is vehicle pursuits. As Mike mentioned, this was something that kind of came into our scope of work a little bit, a few years into our work, in part because the city of Burbank was seeing just a really high level of vehicle pursuits. These are a high-risk activity, both from officer safety as well as community safety, and importantly, from a risk and liability perspective for your city. And so the city asked us to take a look at these vehicle pursuits, what was happening, why were they occurring so frequently in the city? To its credit, the department has now seen a significant decline. So we were looking in the high teens, low twenties at some points, and in 2023, they had four. So you can see that that's a significant difference. That's a credit to the department's changes to policy, which really are now limiting the ways that officers can and should engage in vehicle pursuits. The policy has become much longer, has more guardrails, and we're seeing that, as a result, officers are engaging in fewer pursuits. We think overall that that's a benefit to your city from a safety and liability perspective, although certainly there are some times when a pursuit is very warranted and necessary, and they're doing so within a very clear set of parameters. The one area that we keep looking at is a new policy feature called tracking mode. Tracking mode was something that was added to allow officers just a period of time to assess what they actually had before calling something a formal vehicle pursuit. So a matter of moments to understand, is what I have here meeting the criteria for vehicle pursuit, or do I need to let this one go? Our concern was that we were potentially going to see some pursuit-like activities that were falling into the category called tracking mode. So we were seeing fewer pursuits, but were the same activities still occurring in the city. And the department, in our last audit cycle, committed to having a log of each of those tracking mode uses so that we could then go back and check to see, were these done in a safe manner? Were these truly a very limited window of time where the officers were truly assessing versus engaging in a vehicle pursuit and not calling it that? So we'll certainly be continuing to look at the use of tracking mode. Back to Steve for a special topic. As Mike mentioned, we have looked at body worn camera program. Last year, we looked at the department's responses to mental health persons in crisis call and their mental health evaluation team that you all have here. And this year, we chose the Racial and Identity Profiling Act. So Steve's going to tee us up on that little background, or Mike, whoever, someone is going to tee us up.
I'll get the discussion going. RIPA, or RIPA, Racial Identity Profiling Act, was actually legislation that was passed in 2015 by the state legislature. But the way it was structured is it was phased in over the course of several years. So there was some grace period where all agencies were just given a heads up that we're going to be starting to require you to collect this data and report this data to the Attorney General, US California Department of Justice on an annual basis, but we're not going to make you do it right away. And we're going to start with the larger agencies and then start to phase this in. So Burbank did not, because of the size of the agency, was not one of the first reporters with regard to the RIPA data, but now they are on the list and are now obliged to report on an annual basis. Demographic information about police activity, including stops, arrests, use of force, and the other metrics, and provide a demographic breakdown of what percentage of people of color were subjected to arrest, what percentage of women were subject to stops, searches, et cetera. And Burbank is now obliged to do that and has done that. So the primary goal of our audit was to see how good a job Burbank was doing with regard to accurately collecting this data, which is then reported to DOJ. Because in our view, if the data isn't ac, isn't being accurately reported, then the data, the data and people that rely on that data are going to be misinformed by the, by the bad information that's getting inputted into the system. And Teresa will be talking a little bit more about that project, about that audit and what we found in that audit. But before we go there, I just wanted to talk about the larger issue, which I think almost no agency has really tackled or even begun to address in the state of California consistent with the RIPA Act. The Act does not require the agency, other than collecting the information and reporting it in a public way to the California DOJ. There's no other requirement that RIPA has with regard to using that data by any agency. So while agencies are encouraged to use that information in a way that could be insightful or positive or helpful, or provide insight into police activity in a particular jurisdiction, there's no requirement to do that. And in our experience, up and down the state of California, virtually every agency has done almost nothing with the data. So why is that? Well, one, they're not required to, that's one of the reasons. But two, I think more fundamentally, is that this is complicated. And it's not simply taking the data and looking at potential disparities, with the denominator being the census demographics of any particular city, for example, because policing is more complicated than that. The policing experience involves a lot of people who do not live in Burbank that get arrested and cited and are going to be entered into the data. So that census data is a poor instrument and an insufficient instrument and a simplistic incident, simplistic way of looking at things. Things need to be looked at much more, in a much more complicated and nuanced way. That being said, the data is out there, and I think it's important to continue to look at and to figure out ways in which that data can be used to provide additional insights into essentially how Burbank is being policed and whether or not, to the degree that there are disparities, whether there is anything that can be done to further, to one, understand what, why there are disparities, if there are. And and then, two, the harder question is, if in fact there are disparities and it shows that police activity, people of color are being impacted differently than other people that live in the city of Burbank, what are we going to do about it to reduce that disparity? And again, that's where the challenge is, and that's where I think more work is going to be needed to be done by every agency in California, not limited to Burbank. And I know that we're starting to have discussions with your city leadership, your city's department leadership about that, but there's more to be done on that area. So this is a work in progress. But with regard to the first question, which I think is an important question as well, which is, are they collecting the data fairly and competently and fully? Our audit showed that they were, but I'll ask Teresa to give a little more detail on that. Teresa?
Yeah, so as Mike mentioned, the the fundamental requirement is to collect the data and collect it accurately and report accurate data up to the California Department of Justice for use by the RIPA board. So the way that agencies are doing that differs, you'd be surprised to know. And we learned about the way that Burbank is doing it. And we found that it's a very detailed process to ensure that the data that they're collecting is accurate and that the data they're reporting is accurate. So for every officer who makes a stop that might fit under the umbrella of RIPA requirements, we're seeing that at the shift level, the supervisors are taking a look to make sure that calls that have a stop then have a RIPA report related to those. The watch commander is taking a look to make sure that those are being submitted properly. And then at the lieutenant level in professional standards, the lieutenant is taking a look to make sure that all of those reported pieces of information are accurate and that they make sense. And so he is literally going stop by stop and checking that data. That is something that we have not seen in our work with other jurisdictions. So oftentimes, it's up to the officer to submit his or her report, and then in one big piece, messy, incomplete, inaccurate or not, it gets shipped to DOJ, and that's their issue to deal with. Burbank has really taken ownership of making sure that what they are providing up at the state level is accurate and complies. And so really a distinction of of this department versus others that we have seen. What happens at that point is is a little less, is a little less clear. So one of the things that the department has done is used its stop data to inform some more specific audits. One of the audits that we took a look at was stops and searches. And so the department did a sample of its RIPA stops. It determined whether or not the stop and any related search had legal basis. And they found, to their credit, a few that they felt could have been done better, and they assessed those and then provided counseling and retraining to the officers involved. So they are using their RIPA stop data in a way to inform the way that policing is occurring in the city. And that, again, as Mike mentioned, they're not required to do that. It's something they've self-selected to do internally. The piece that we feel could potentially increase transparency and accountability is providing some of the data to external. So some agencies are putting the raw RIPA data on transparency dashboards for members of the public, council, et cetera, to do their own analysis. Some agencies are choosing to find some academic groups to help them do the kind of nuanced dig, digging into, you know, manipulating different variables to see what is the data actually telling us about the way our police are policing in our city? And they're choosing that avenue to get some answers. And so we, in our report, discussed some of the different features that Burbank might consider going forward, again, with full knowledge that these are not requirements of RIPA, but certainly kind of encompass the spirit of what are we to do with this information that's being collected currently? And so we're happy to answer questions about RIPA, about use of force, vehicle pursuits, misconduct, anything that you might wish to discuss further. And thanks for your time.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Ginaco, anything else from you or the team as part of the presentation?
Mayor Schultz, I submit.
So that's what that feels like. Interesting. Feel free to, I'm never going to be on that side of it, Joe, let's be real. Thank you, Mr. Ginaco, Mr. Connolly, I, I, whole team. Oh, my gosh, we didn't put your name on the script. I'm so sorry for that. What was your last name again?
Magula.
Magula?
Magula.
Magula. All right, I'm going to write that down. Ms. Magula, thank you as well. Now is the time for general public, sorry, for public comment on the first study session period. As a reminder, we are starting public comment now, so I am now closing the period for new comment cards or callers. Ms. Clark, how many comment cards and or callers do we currently have?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. We have one card and no callers.
Oh, okay. Can I get the card up? I'm going to assume it's Mr. Donahue because he's walking towards me. All right. Mr. Donahue, based on the number of commenters, you will have three minutes whenever you're ready.
Mayor Schultz, council members and staff, somebody who's been following the Police Commission for several years, I want to just take a moment to personally thank our police department for the work that they do, for the scrutiny that they are under for reports like this that happen. I think that they stand head and shoulders above any neighboring agencies. Another point that I wanted to kind of bring to the council is the fact that what happened recently with Councilmember Paul Kocorian and the gentleman who was moved by the Burbank Police Department, of course, it's not going to be in this report since there's such a lag, but would be remiss not to compliment you, Mayor Schultz, in the way that you handled this. You handled it with a lot of, I don't want to say grace, but authority. You were emphatic on Paul Kocorian should have reached out to you, the police department, before making those horrendous allegations. We sit in this chamber, we stand in this chamber, and listen to the reports of the scrutiny that the department comes under. Mr. Kocorian failed to do anything that would except impugn the reputation for this great city and this great department. There has been no apology from Paul Kocorian. There has been no, I should have done something better from Paul Kocorian, or the city of Los Angeles, which I feel they have a duty, as they are the city that he is representing, to then come back to our city, our department, and you, Mayor Schultz, to say you were correct in calling this out. I was, watched the presentation by Chief Albanese, and it was detailed and thorough, and I could not have seen anything or hoped for anything more. It was great to see that defense. And also, in chambers, when you actually made the comment that after that, that there could have been something, could have been, as opposed to what was happening. This is going to tie into something I'm going to do after 6 o'clock. It is the malignment, it is the accusations, they are the claims of impropriety that are unfounded, and that the people should have taken some time to really investigate those before they did that. And that's what you were an advocate of, Mayor Schultz. Thank you very much to you, to Chief Albanese, and the entire team that fought very hard against that, and also for being able to just have such a great report. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, we have no other in-person comment cards, we have no callers, correct, Ms. Clark? Okay, just wanted to be sure. We've now completed the first in-person study session, public comment period, and we'll be moving to call in public comment, which we don't have. So we will now be completing public comment in general. Look at that. That was pretty good in the script right there. So now we come to the time, first, I'm going to give it over to our staff and or consultants. If you had any brief response, you don't have to, but if you have any response to public comment, now would be the time. Otherwise, we'll go to questions. Mr. Ginaco, thank you.
Mayor, just briefly, in response to the commentator, obviously, that incident and the review of that incident will be obviously featured likely in our next report. So pursuant to our cycle, that's certainly going to be on the list of things to talk about.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ginaco. I do have a- I do have a brief response to that, but I'll go last. So let's instead go to questions from anyone, let's start with the Police Commission. So Chair Coombs, if I can have your assistance, if any of our commissioners have a question for OIR, we can take in any order that you see fit, sir.
Sure. Is it okay to address?
Yeah, come on up. Just use the microphone.
I'm saving the report that I'm going to share for a little bit later. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I just appreciate having the opportunity to get the presentation from OIR, so thank you for that. I wanted to touch briefly on, as we go into this, briefly on the role between the Police Commission versus the Office of Investigative Review. The Police Commission has the opportunity to, we anticipate issues, and then we respond to issues of areas that are not under investigation. So we carry this fine line. We're on an evening like tonight. We get to hear details into reports and activity that we're not privy to during the rest of the year, so I really appreciate having that opportunity. Depending on the information that provided by OIR that we can then incorporate into future agenda items, for any matters related to investigation, we don't have the capacity to respond in a timely manner, but we try. I hope that other commissioners are also able to express your perspectives on and response to the OIR report. I can only offer my perspective, as we haven't had an opportunity to discuss this before. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to invite my colleagues from the Commission to raise any concerns or observations that you have from the report and the presentation this evening, and then I may opt to address the council again if there were any items that may have been left unaddressed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Anyone from the Commission with a question, observation, or concern? Not all at once now, okay? I see Commissioner McKenna rising. Paul, what do you have for us?
So I just wanted to say that I think what was reinforced tonight is what we've always felt on the Commission, and that is transparency. That is why things like the videos coming out are so disturbing, because we have seen videos that have been edited for the person's benefit, and it really shows the wonderful job our officers did. My observation as a citizen and as a member of the Commission is that our officers are incredibly skilled at de-escalation, and the department is, maintains its clean hands because of its transparency, and we are all blessed to be in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Commissioner Faruzan?
Hi, thank you for the presentation. As Commissioner Coombs said, it's really helpful for us to hear this information and this really in-depth analysis, because that's not something that's in our purview and that we have access to regularly. And I just wanted to say that, yeah, it's, as others have said, it's very clear from the recommendations that they're really small, I don't want to minimize it, but, you know, not, there are no major issues, and that the department is doing a great job, and that one that you hold up as an example, that comes across very clearly. And so that's always wonderful to hear for that, for the, at least those past couple years I've been on the Commission. And also just to echo, as someone who works with data and policy in my day job, that there are a lot of challenges with the RIPA data, there are a lot of unknowns, and I was really excited to see that you took a deep dive into how accurate and the process and the quality control and all those kinds of things. And again, heartened to hear that our department is going above and beyond, where some others may not. And as someone who's looked into, looked at that data, you know, so there are some things that we've noticed as we're going through it, that it's, it's not the, you know, cleanest, but it is new, so, you know, appreciating that as well. But also just that these are, you know, issues on people's minds, and that echoing your point that it, you know, the department has gone above and beyond. There was an internal report, at least, and that maybe needed to be shared a little wider, but that the department just continued to take steps to look at that information internally and also share that information externally to, you know, address any, any concerns that folks have, and, you know, in a vacuum, rumor spread or people, you know, that's where, where the uncertainty comes and, and lack of trust. So just that transparency and helping folks to understand that data, because again, it is new, I think would be really important. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anyone else from the Commission? Chair Coombs, I think you're up. Be quick, or else I'm going to give David three more minutes. He's sitting here, I'm going to let, okay.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, my name is Roman Kocopian, Vice Chair of the Police Commission. You know, I was fortunate, I was lucky enough to go to the NACO Conference, which is a conference that allows police commissioners from all around the country to come together, two years ago in Fort Worth, Texas, to have conversation about, you know, policing and their relationship with their local agency. And I have to, I have to say that some police commissions that were providing an oversight, the borough oversight body, you know, a lot of the complaints that they had about just cooperation with our local jurisdiction, local department, you know, we did not see here. So I felt like what was consistent in the OIR report was the level of transparency and accountability, and we saw a lot of that and the swift response to correcting actions, which I think is really, really, which is really important, because when you hear stories from commissioners from Detroit, from New York, from, you know, Albuquerque, about their, just their struggles, I mean, those are things that I remember coming back and having that conversation with the chief that like, I'm like, I couldn't relate to. So just thank you to the police department for the wonderful work, and OIR for doing this wonderful review, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much, Vice Chair Kocopian. Chair Coombs?
What I'd like to name was something that we had done recently, and this was in the report as well, this is related to the investigation that involved Kocorian's office, and thank you, Paul, for bringing, or thank you, Mr. Donahue, for bringing that up earlier, is while we can't address anything specifically related to an active investigation, one of the things that we've been doing this past year is we, we're learning to kind of flex our muscle in terms of what we can address. And so we were able to, shortly after that incident, able to agendize and talk about the policies behind that. So it's, it's a fine line, because we can't really get into what's actively under investigation, but we can express our concerns as residents of Burbank and bring that up, so community members can also address those concerns that they have. With that, I'm not sure if in the agenda, this is the time to present a report from the Commission, or is that come later? I'm not sure.
I'm going to defer to the city attorney. I think what would be most appropriate is after we complete the second report item, Mr. McDougal, I think that would be the time for any other comments.
Well, my take is that the OIR report talks about the importance of the Burbank Police Commission, so if Mr. Coombs has any additional comments about the Commission and its role in oversight and review of subject matter dealing with policing, I think now would be the time.
Okay.
And then the council can follow up with its questions of the Commission and OIR.
Okay, that sounds like a good course of action. Mr. Coombs, take it away.
With that, I have a copy of the report to give to the council members, if I can hand it over this way. And there are extra copies that are in, in the hallway as well for folks, and I think there'll be extra copies there as they come around.
All right, you can begin whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I got more than three minutes, I hope, but I hope I won't take longer than that.
Give me a solid five.
All right. So Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Perez, council members Mullins, Takahashi, and Anthony, on behalf of the Burbank Police Commission, I want to thank the city council members for the opportunity to address you this evening and the opportunity to serve the, to serve the entire Burbank community throughout the year. The formal role of the Police Commission remains to initiate studies and surveys in the general field of police science and law enforcement, and report its findings and recommendations to the council, to conduct hearings, investigations, or both, at the request of the council, for the purpose of ascertaining whether additional legislation is needed in the areas of health, safety, peace, and welfare of the inhabitants of the city, and to make findings and recommendations to the council, to act in an advisory capacity to the council on policy matters pertaining to the police department and the city, to receive complaints, except those related to traffic, engineering pertaining to police department or law enforcement in general. Yes. Examining books, papers, records, accounts of the police department, other than confidential matters under investigation. Informally, as a Commission, we have invested in a spirit of collaboration and have demonstrated shared and bilateral accountability in our work with the police department. While we uphold and advocate for the work of the 156 sworn and 77 civilian men and women of the department, we have also embraced our role as members of the Burbank community to advocate for the concerns and needs of the residents of our city. We believe that we continue to meet these expectations with professionalism, diligence, and sincerity. The following topics have been agendized and addressed by the Police Commission over the course of the past year. We have engaged the department's communications center, detectives' division, fleet management, the mental health evaluation team, the patrol division, the records division, the traffic division, and the training division, as well as the city's community development department and the management services department, to address AB 481 and the report on military equipment, including a special community engagement meeting, AB 2124 and the Freedom to Walk Act, the 2023 to 2025 strategic plan for the Burbank, Burbank Police Department, annual attendance at the NACO Conference, and participation in online NACO seminars throughout the year, an annual dashboard calendar, the biennial citywide survey on Burbank Police Department performance and community perception, or perception, correct, domestic violence, Drive Right, the Drive Right Saves Lives campaigns, campaign, education and training programs, encrypted radio communication, the holiday DUI checkpoints, homelessness and homeless engagement, mailbox thefts, mental health and substance abuse, patrol vehicles and vehicle technology, funding, acquisition, and maintenance, personnel recruitment and the selections process, the Public Records Act, the Racial Identity and Profiling Act, RIPA and accompanying report, recovery from the COVID pandemic, school traffic safety, self-evaluation of the performance and functioning of the Police Commission, smash and grab thefts, and zero bail. It's been a lot that we've covered just this, in these past 12 months. We have also participated, as mentioned, in the Drive Right Saves Lives Project, which is a grassroots campaign promoting road safety through workshops and partnerships with local dealerships. This program was developed in response to the devastating multi-car incident in August of 2021 that took three young lives, and was inspired by the efforts of Together We Can and other community activists. The initiative was brought to the community by the Burbank Armenian Association, working in partnership with the Police Commission, and is supported by the Burbank Police Department, local car dealerships, and over 30 community organizations. In this program, car dealerships distribute safety brochures to new drivers, and various groups hold workshops to raise awareness. This campaign exemplifies the proactive efforts of the Police Commission to create a safer Burbank. With the support and the guidance of the city attorney's office, the Police Commission has convened and implemented ad hoc committees on bicycle safety, catalytic converter legislation, crime statistics, department wellness, e-bikes and micro mobility devices, our mission, based on prior commission and board meetings and trainings addressing mission and vision and normalizing racial equity in local government, pedestrian safety, school safety, and a standardized data request format and process. Thank you, Leila. Commissioners have also attended Coffee with a Cop, the Annual Gun Buyback, the Homeless Count, and ride-alongs with PIO Sergeant Turner, National Night Out, the Officer Matthew Pavelka flagpole and commemorative plaque unveiling, ride-alongs with the rank and file, and Take a Scoop out of Crime. During our self-assessment, we identified successes in managing the ad hoc subcommittees, selection of relevant and contemporary issues for the discussion of the monthly agendas, respectful and specific communication between members of the department, members and the department, productivity during, during an outside of commission meetings, development of the Safe Driver Campaign, patrol ride-alongs, having regular public participation at meetings, and compliance with the Brown Act. Areas identified for growth include how to better serve, how to serve better as a resource to the city council, improved community engagement, increased self-initiation to seek out information online and doing more independent research before, prior to making an ask of the department for data, improved self-evaluation and resolution of projects, and more robust orientation for the onboarding of new commissioners. The use of a consensus model for decision-making and more informal engagement among commission members, I believe, has led to more focused meetings and the ability to address pressing issues in a timely manner while following the Brown Act requirements. And we are grateful for our collaboration with the support of the city's attorney's office, Ms. Oh and Mr. Johal, former police administrator Courtney Paget, and current police administrator Viviana Garzon, and executive administrator Sherry Nakamura, who has both, who's been both our biggest cheerleader and has kept us in line, and it sounds like she was off the hook to participate this evening. I would like to close with deep appreciation, expression of deep appreciation for all of the officers and the administrators who have taken the time to prepare their presentations for the Commission, and specifically to Captain Dennis Cremins, who has continued to provide unconditional behind-the-scenes support for commissioners, and to Chief Albanese for his leadership and collaboration. Chief Albanese and Captain Cremins have provided sage advice and wisdom to the Commission. Our Commission has benefited greatly from their services over these past, is it 14 years or 13 years?
Coming up.
Coming up on 15 years. For the past 15 years, joining the city at a time when we needed them and they could have enjoyed well-earned retirements, but chose not to. We hope to have the opportunity to celebrate both Chief Albanese and Captain Cremins in the upcoming months as they retire after, I believe, 53 years each of dedicated public service. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to address the council.
Thank you very much, Chair Coombs. Very well said, too, I might add. Colleagues on the council, let's begin with questions and/or commentary. Who'd like to go first? Councilmember Mullins, I see you reaching for the mic.
For some reason, you always see that, right?
I'm just perceptive.
Well, I have lots of comments, but I do have one question in regards to the RIPA data, and I'm wondering if the chief will be okay. What I heard earlier is there's a lot of different ways we can report the data, and we can do it online for transparency purposes, but I was wondering, instead of doing it online, since we're beginning to do this, we can share it with the commissioners as part of their agenda item and updates that we come to them, which will be televised and the public will get to hear about it. So I don't know if the chief would be the one answering, or that would be you, or if there is a way that we need to make it happen.
So good evening again. As far as the transparency part of this, is that we're working really hard to be transparent with all that data. We have a dedicated lieutenant to be the clearinghouse of all that information so that we have DOJ compliance. We have had a dedicated lieutenant since this was onboarded. So I'm going to introduce you to Lieutenant Emil Brimway, who oversees our program, who has taken heed to the recommendations to make sure that we're in compliance with DOJ. Moving forward, how that looks as far as the dashboard, getting that information out. The first report that we were, that we had, we got that out to our commissioners and online, and the challenge that we have is a side-by-side. The side-by-side is that we have one report with data, and we have no new report, the 23 report has not come out yet, to do a side-by-side. So I'm so glad you asked that question, and Lieutenant Brimway will be able to expound on that.
Thank you, chief. Welcome, lieutenant.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Police Commission. Lieutenant Emil Brimway, I'm currently assigned to our Professional Standards Bureau, so we are in the process of collecting the data for 2023. I'm also looking into a dashboard system as recommended by the OIR, so I'm working on that, but I will, I'm open to collecting that data and then sharing it at the Police Commission meeting, that's no issue. It'll be a few months down the line, since we're still waiting on the 2023 data, but once we do receive that information, it takes some time to process it. We have no issue with sharing that with the Commission and the public as well.
Excellent, thank you. I didn't think you would have any issues, but it's one way of getting the word out and making it available through the Commission meetings, and the public will be aware of it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think you're off the hook for now. Councilmember, what else you got?
I have lots of great comments, but I think you want questions.
Does anyone else have questions? You have a question? By golly, go for it.
Yeah. I wanted to talk a little bit about tracking mode. We mentioned in 2022, there was close to 20 incidences of police pursuit, and then the following year, it went down to four. Do we know the total number of tracking mode incidents that we had, or?
Ms. Magula?
Yes. Thank you for that question. So we are, as I mentioned, waiting to see what that tracking mode log is showing, and that's something that we will discuss in our 2024 report. The department might have some numbers, I don't know that they're prepared to share those, but they're certainly tracking those, tracking mode numbers, and they, they have agreed to, to share those with us so we can take a look in '24.
And then while you're up here, would tracking mode incidences, would those be also put into the RIPA data?
That is a good question. I believe if they- I believe if they result in a stop, they would be under the RIPA requirements, but if it's something that doesn't actually result in that stop occurring, it may not be captured in RIPA data.
Okay. I suspect Captain Cornelius may have an answer there.
He's up. Is that it?
Yes, she, exactly what she said. If there's a stop or a detention that results from it, there'll be RIPA data entered, connected to the persons involved. If we end up letting the vehicle go, there's not going to be any data to be put in.
Okay. All right. Great. That was my other question, actually. All right. Thank you both. Anything else? Okay. Councilmember Takahashi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for this presentation, and I also really appreciate all the work that you've put in to this effort for our city, and thank you to the Police Commission for being here tonight and sharing all the work that you've done. A couple of questions for the OIR, and a couple of questions for the commission. So for this year's audit, just to, so I understand that this is a voluntary audit that we did this year, and that it's done yearly, correct? Okay, so that will be continued to be happening yearly forward. Great. And I really appreciate the extra topic that you included the past two years, and I'm wondering, when do you, and how do you decide what the extra topic will be for this next coming year?
Some of that decision that we reach is based on, you know, topics that we see bubbling up without, throughout the law enforcement communities in the state of California and nationwide, or areas in which the public has expressed an interest in learning more about and proceeding with, with various topics. Another thing that we will, I will, this evening, offer is if any of you as individual elective leadership of the, of the city have an idea for an audit that you thought would be beneficial, and you'd like us to take on, we obviously be happy to take direction and guidance from you all.
Great, thank you. So it was mentioned earlier about the situation with the LAPD or LA District, and my guess is that homelessness or how our department handles homelessness situations might be a topic. Please consider, if you can, also transportation out of the city and how that works, and then also how internet videos are handled by the department as well. And I've seen some of, some of it, you know, from our perspective, but it'd be kind of nice to see a kind of an overview of how the policies are for how to deal with internet videos that are brought to their attention and how that follow-through is. And then one more question about RIPA data. So very thorough presentation about RIPA data, thank you for explaining that. You answered almost all my questions, I have one left. So on the actual stop at the site, how is it guaranteed that that, at that site, the RIPA data that's collected is accurate, and then is there an audit of that onsite collection later?
Welcome back, Lieutenant.
So when the police officers make a traffic stop, they have their cell phone devices, the app is on that device, so the officers are encouraged to submit that data immediately after that stop. Additionally, they can do that on desktop computers at the station as well. The officers are also required to clear the stop RIPA, so they actually voice that on the radio. So let's say they write someone a ticket, they say 10-8, site RIPA. So the supervisors know that the officers are thinking about doing the RIPA and that they complete the RIPA. You had a second question?
Yeah, is the onsite collection, the accuracy of the onsite collection data, is it audited later?
So the patrol supervisors do RIPA audits, so they'll look at the officer's logs, and then they'll compare it to RIPA. So if someone makes a traffic stop and makes an arrest or issues a citation, the supervisor can find that on our CAD or on the officer's log, and then they cross-reference it to the RIPA entry, and then they compare the two.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
Sure.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I have one question.
Sure.
Just one and a half questions for the commission. So thank you again for being here tonight, and thank you for your presentation, President, Commissioner, President Coombs. Very thorough, and I'm looking at this list, and I'm thinking that maybe you were more busy than we were this year, how much you've covered, and if there's anything left to cover after this, after all these topics. So thank you for covering these. My question for you is, what has the attendance been like at your meetings, and do you have any idea of viewerships of the meeting online?
We definitely need to lift up Mr. Donahue and Mr. Schlossman, who are regular attendees at the, at the commission meetings. We're seeing, I go back and I watch the videos every once in a while, and if I recall correctly, we're usually seeing about a month, month and a half after a meeting, we'll see about 30 or so views online. I know my dad's watching, and I also, I also know that the chief's spouse is watching, so that's two right there. But the, it's, it's been consistent, and, and it's, it's, there's more that's happening outside of who's watching as well. I know a lot of the commissioners raise issues that are brought up to them in the community. I know that there are people that contact me via either email or if they know me personally, and I know that that's happening with other commissioners as well. So, so I appreciate the fact that we're able to capture that information, have those discussions, have it recorded. There, it is not lost on us that the meetings are broadcast and recorded, so that way people can pick up the information later on. And specifically, one of the things that we've worked on, that I'd love to see us lean into, that wasn't on the report this year, we've toyed with the idea of pulling clips from some of those, some of those meetings when we address specific issues with the, with the department, either the discussion or the presentation itself, that we would like to find more ways, we started talking about, we would like to find more ways to publicize that using some of the city's channels for that, so. Any, any other responses from commissioners?
That was great.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you. Yeah, that's a great idea, and if you come up with any other ideas that you think we can be helpful to help promote the awareness and attendance of these meetings and, and people who are watching them later, please let us know, we can partner with you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You got it. Last call for questions. Vice Mayor, nothing on your end? Nothing on? Yes, Councilmember Anthony.
Yeah, actually, I had some questions come up while you were talking.
Funny how that happens, you know? All right. Take it away.
Actually, it's only one very specific question. The, the in custody death that happened, in the report, there's a couple of suggestions for changes, things that we need to pay attention to, to make sure other stuff doesn't fall by the wayside or fall through the cracks. From my understanding, even if all of the boxes were checked and we went through and did everything that was listed as recommended, there was no way to know that that would have had any effect on the result of the actual in custody death, is that correct?
Thank you for the question. I'm going to say objection calls for speculation. I, I see-
I'm going to overrule that objection. Give us an answer.
I see your point. I do think that it's impossible to know in many respects, and this was a person who definitely had some significant medical issues that he arrived at the jail with, for sure. That said, I think the object of the game is to, is to shrink the target and to, and to find ways to minimize the, the department's exposure and to maximize the extent to which people who are medically vulnerable are in the best place, and I think the department has taken steps to accomplish that.
Thank you. I, I absolutely agree with you. I think there are steps we can take to reduce the chances of it happening, but yeah, but going through the report, I mean, there were so many other mitigating circumstances, and so, it was unfortunate, it was very unfortunate. But yes, I, I look forward to us, like you said, shrinking that target, trying to make it possible so that it doesn't happen. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Connolly, and we note that you're not an expert in causation on this matter, but we appreciate the speculation. Okay. We're going to go to comments now. Councilmember Mullins, you're chomping at the bit. Why don't you lead us off?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I, I look forward to this report every year, and I, I am very, very pleased to hear that we are doing great. There's always room for improvement, and I know you mentioned something earlier, Mr. Janaco, about this report is good to keep us on our toes, so we are doing the right things. But along with that, I also like to add, it's also holding us accountable and transparent to our community to show that we take this very serious as a council, as a city, and we would like to know how well we're doing, and if there's something wrong, we're willing to fix it, and we're willing to bring it out in the open, so we can address the issues, and we can talk about it and educate ourselves and move forward. I can't tell you how pleased I am to hear that we have other agencies that come here and sit down with the chief, but I'm not surprised, so they can learn from us. And so this is something, definitely, we want to keep that going, and maybe we'll charge a little bit of money to give them that education, right? Maybe we, we hold a session in the afternoon with extra funds. Hey, you know, it's, there's ways to make money. We, we're, it's good to be the leading agency, and it's good to look at what needs to be corrected, and we take that forward, and we make the corrections that we need to do. As far as RIPA, we talked about, I think, I look forward to seeing what comes out of those reports, and I, I understand why we are not there yet, because it sounds like this is something new, and we're all trying to figure it out, so definitely, it's okay with that. And I, I want to, you know, briefly talk about the 55 allegations or offense that we're looking at, out of how many thousands and thousands of cases or stops or situations. So 55 for a city our size, I think kudos to the department, kudos to the leadership of the department, of what they're doing to educate our officers, so I do really want to applaud them for this. Now, moving on to our police commissioners, being one of your audience on Wednesday evenings and some of your liaison, I see all the work you do, and Mr. Coombs and the rest of the commissioners, thank you so much for always asking the right questions, always wanting to know how things are done, and what can we do to make it better, because you are our eyes and ears in the community as well, and I do appreciate all the subject and everything you went through on this agenda and the report you gave us. I've said here, and I heard you, and I appreciate the staff for always willing to provide you that information. There's always room also for you to be engaged in other things, and, and we would love to hear from you in the future. Here's additional things that we want to work on, and bring it back to council, and I know this council here is always very supportive of your work, and the police department staff is always supportive. So it doesn't end here, we can continue discussion, and I look forward to next year's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anthony, you're up.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments to the speaker. I agree 100%. Everything you said, absolutely. It's rare, 100% agreement. Thank you. Thank you. To our commission, thank you for doing the work. You are out there, you're attending events, you're going above and beyond the requirements and attending so many conferences and teach-ins, and it's really great. And I want to add one more list of things that you've listed here. I do often see our police commission members attending our annual 9/11 memorial, so thank you for also participating there. OIR, you guys have been doing such great work for so many years, very thorough, and yes, I brag about you to every, all the other cities that I go to, and I tell them, these are the guys, and gals. I would like to offer up one potential item for next year, if you want to take it up, and this is based on something Councilmember Takahashi mentioned. We, in this day and age, often get brought to us incidents through non-traditional means, not 911 calls or not even emails. We will get tagged in a video on TikTok, and I don't necessarily know how to proceed with that. So I would love to offer up that as a potential investigation for how our department deals with social media incidences or things that are reported in non-traditional ways. Sometimes we'll just get an email with some photographs, and people will say, this is thing is happening. It's like, okay, all right, forward this along, how do we deal with it? So I would like to offer that up as a potential, possible next year report.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we'll go to the Vice Mayor.
As always, thank you, Mr. Janaco, Mr. Connolly, and Ms. Magula. I really appreciate the report, it's extremely detailed, as you can see by my lack of questions. I think I had one question, which Councilmember Mullins asked, and that's about it, but I, I appreciate it truly, as always, and I appreciate the reasoning that goes into our department's response as well. Thank you, Chief, and everyone for putting it together, and I, I think I'm very pleased to see that to every recommendation, you were met with, great, we are going to either continue doing this, or, great, we are going to incorporate this, which I think just speaks to the collaborative relationship that you have with our department, and which I think is, just speaks volumes. And I have to say, to, to the RIPA requirements, and to a lot of the other legislative requirements. I worked in the state legislature at the time that this was happening, and I remember the formulation of all this, I remember the concerns, the back and forth with departments, and I have to say, it is incredibly refreshing and incredibly wonderful to see BPD say, these are our requirements, we are fulfilling them and exceeding them in a way that I have not seen across the state, so I'm really grateful to have this department. I've said it before, I'll say it again, we have the best PD in the nation, and I stand by that, and I'm really grateful for, for all of that. And to our commissioners, thank you for the work that you all do. It shows, not only through these lists, but also in seeing you all out and about in the community and during the commission meetings. Mr. Coombs, I'm really excited about the possibility of those videos and having those snippets for our community members that perhaps can't go to the entire meeting, or would just like some information, or even are just becoming acquainted with the commission itself. So I think that's a great idea, hope to see that move along, and really grateful for the report. It's not often that we just get information, get to say, that was great, thank you so much. So, thank you all.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Takahashi.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you again for all this report and the work. I'm impressed with the process every year. I'm impressed with the process, I'm impressed with our department. Audits are not easy to receive, and our leadership in our department is brave to step forward, to volunteer, to be studied year after year, and also humble to be willing to learn each year to receive feedback. That is not easy to do, and our department does it with grace. Also, that willingness to listen both to the feedback from the audit and also from the community, so I just want to voice my appreciation for that. There was also a mention in the audit of the, the department's high level of response to community members, particularly letters of response, and I haven't seen letters, but I've seen the emails that come through in responding to the community, and the emails are always kind, thoughtful, truthful, sometimes truthful, which are difficult to hear, and infinitely patient. There are some individuals in the community that, that are, are, have a lot of contact with the, with the department, and the department continues to be patient and thoughtful with every email that comes through, and never waivers, which I am impressed with. And it was also mentioned that our department is a model for the rest of the state or country, and I 100% agree with it, as you, as my colleagues have said, and I appreciate the sentiment being reflected in this report, and I hope that this sentiment is seen by other cities to take note that our process is one that is very, very high quality. So I'm looking forward, every year, look forward to the report, as Councilmember Mullins says. As a community member, before I was on council, I also looked forward to the report. It makes me feel very taken care of in the city to have a department that's this, consider it for us, so much appreciation. And again, to the commission, thank you for being here tonight, for all you do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wonderful. Did that spur any other comments? No, then I'll just quickly say, in order of what I see as the priority, first of all, we really do have a phenomenally well-run department. Chief, that of course starts with you, but that extends to your entire command team and the, every, every uniformed person that calls BPD home, so thank you all for your service, and just know that, at least from my perspective, I'm very proud to stand up and say that I'm from the city of Burbank, and we do have, as the Vice Mayor says, the best department in the country, and I'd put that up against any other department there is, so, hope you all know how proud we are of you. And then, Mr. Janaco, Mr. Connolly, Ms. Magula, it's been a real pleasure, I've had a chance to work with you the last four years, and I can truly say that, while I won't be continuing that relationship past this year, we are in exceptional hands with all three of you. You do such a phenomenal job. The report is comprehensive, it's holistic, the suggestions are thoughtful, they're innovative, and I just, I really encourage future councils to continue that investment and that relationship, because that is how you have good policing, by being proactive and introspective and reflective. So I, I just, thank you so much for your contributions. To our commissioners, I, you know, again, I am one of those probably 36 people that are watching, I'm usually traveling from point A to point B, but I'm always listening in. DOJ, it's a big brother thing, but I'm always listening, and you all do a really wonderful job. You ask great questions, you agendize fantastic topics, you work collaboratively with our staff, and just know- staff and just know how grateful I am for your contributions today and at every meeting. Um, and then the last thing I would just say is that, Mr. Donahue, I I do appreciate the comment and I just want to say, this is more for the benefit of my colleagues and perhaps the next mayor who could be uh sitting in the room. Look, it it's very difficult when you have someone who has come forward and uh not acted as I would certainly do in that situation. But perhaps it's my training as a prosecutor, um, I think that while I always had faith and confidence in our department, it's critical not to say or do anything that impedes the investigative process. But I am proud to say that at the end of the day, I think the work that was done, all the comments that the that the chief shared a few weeks back, um, I I echo them. Uh, and the only other thing I would add for public consumption is I've had several very substantive, good conversations with colleagues, not Councilman Krikorian, but other colleagues out of the city of Los Angeles who have had concerns. I welcome more dialogue and whether it's Councilman Krikorian or his chief of staff, Caro Torosian, or anyone else who may be watching this back later, I repeat my invitation. I can be reached at 818-806-9392. I welcome a conversation and I like to think that if we just speak with each other and not at each other more, that we can really do better to be better regional partners and not so much of the performative politics that we see these days. So for what it's worth, that's my two cents. And unless that begs any other dialogue, I think we should go to our next agenda item. No? So we'll consider that a note and file. Fantastic job, OIR. All right. So that takes us to our second agenda item as part of today's special meeting. The second study session item is a presentation of an ordinance amending Title V entitled Police and Public Safety, Chapter Three, Article Three of the Burbank Municipal Code, establishing a prohibition on carrying or possessing specified items while attending or participating in any public demonstration, rally, protest, picket line, or public assembly. I welcome back Captain Corneals to commence the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. In the interest of time, I will say thank to the mayor, vice mayor, council and uh Chair Coombs and police commission. I apologize, I'm doing this presentation mostly for your benefit, but I'll be looking this way. Um, I'm presenting a basically an overview of a presentation I made last week um on the topic the mayor addressed. And it's a recommendation to adopt an ordinance uh amending BMC five dash three dash three zero one, which establishes a prohibition on carrying or possessing certain items while participating or attending in a public assembly, um, demonstration, protest, picket line, or rally. The current version of this statute was adopted in 1987. Uh, it has a pretty limited scope. It addresses essentially two items, uh, or two classes of items, lengths of metal, hard plastic, uh, hard synthetics, or pieces of lumber unless they fall in some specified dimensions of basically what we would commonly refer to as a dowel. So you can attach a sign or a banner to it, to a dowel, but you can't attach it to a two-by-four or a piece of rebar uh or something that's sharp, excuse me, that's sharp on the end because of the uh ability for that to become a makeshift weapon. So the proposed ordinance uh is modeled after ordinances we see in other cities uh in the region in the last six to seven years, among those being Glendale, city of Los Angeles, Beverly Hills, Santa Monica, Covina. And they've, they've enacted a similar ordinance to address some items that would be innocuous in a day-to-day setting, uh, but that in a demonstration or an assembly or a protest, um, they don't necessarily have a nexus to First Amendment expression and they become a weapon of opportunity very quickly and it's difficult to to manage their presence within that area. I I make the example last time of uh they don't give you glass bottles at Dodger Stadium for a reason, uh, because in in a quick moment when emotions are heated, that becomes a projectile and becomes a weapon. And for us in a crowd of dozens or hundreds of people, um, being able to manage what is coming in there is going to be much more effective for us than trying to respond to something that's happening in a crowd of dozens or hundreds of people and being able to manage that in a timely manner. So what we've seen recently in the last few years, we've seen an increase in demonstrations. Um, there's a lot of emotionally charged topics, groups with counter protesters, I can get very heated very quickly. There's unpredictable attendance and behavior. Uh, we've had some incidents of assault, vandalism, pepper spraying. There've been some larger issues in the region. We've been very fortunate here in that we have not had significant bad outcomes, uh, but the potential is always there and we expect the operational tempo of protests and demonstrations to to maintain or increase as time goes on. So what we do, what my chief expects, is that we look at our circumstances and we do an analysis of what we think our needs are. And we're looking at training, equipment, policy, and in this case, codes or or laws, things that we think would help us do our job better. So one of the capability gaps that we identified when we compare ourselves regionally is is our ordinance as it stands right now, where we can manage certain lengths of lumber coming in, manage people coming in with metal poles, um, but somebody could walk in with a bag full of bricks to a demonstration right now. We could talk to them, ask them, hi, what's your intent with that? We would prefer you don't bring those in here. And they could tell us, thank you very much for your input, but I'm going in. And they're going to go in and we are going to be in a position where we can watch, but we essentially have to wait until something is brandished or or used unlawfully until we can take action. And we can't manage those items as they come in. What we're looking at with this amendment is to basically take a proactive approach instead of being in a reactive mode, which is where we are right now. Uh, current restrictions are very minimal. Uh, they impose a reactive approach on us. Like I said in the case I made, where somebody with a bag of bricks or a bag of bottles, a slingshot, a water balloon launcher, we can converse with them, we can ask for compliance, but we have no standing to uh to get it. With the proposed amendment, we're looking at a more proactive approach. My goal here, I will consider this ordinance a success if we never make an arrest on it. Uh, the goal is education, engagement, identifying if there's a problematic or a problematic item, diverting that out of the area and having that person come back. Uh, we learned a lot about this in 2023. This was really the impetus for proposing this when our response to Glendale. Uh, you may recall last summer, they had some school board demonstrations and they put out a call for mutual aid. And what we saw them do there is they enacted this ordinance. They defined the protest area, they posted signs, they posted officers, they observed people coming in. If somebody had a prohibited item in plain view, they would contact them, talk to them, tell them about the ordinance, direct them to take it out of the area, back to their car, back to their apartment, whatever the case may be. And then they were welcome to come back. Uh, they had some incidents of scuffling, some, they had some batteries, they had some pepper spraying incidents on the outskirts, but to borrow a phrase from the last presentation, they were able to shrink the target. And they were able to manage those much more effectively as opposed to a a melee with some sort of makeshift weapon in the middle of this crowd of hundreds of people where we're going to be delayed in responding and we're probably going to have folks going to the hospital. It was suggested during the last presentation that we consider making a one sheet as part of our public education effort. So we're going to do outreach on social media. We will put stuff on our website. We will have signage made for demonstration areas, but we really like this idea. And uh, our administrative analyst, Nazelia Kimian, who's hiding in the back there, she did a lot of work and put this together. Uh, this is just a draft model, so it's flexible, we can make some changes. That QR code in the corner goes nowhere right now, so don't try and use that. But this is something that we can post to social media when we meet with organizers of demonstrations, which we do frequently. We can provide copies of these for their attendees so they know in advance. And it's going to, I think it's going to do a lot to better our communication with folks when they come in. We want people to express themselves. We have a, I think, a good track record here of facilitating people's First Amendment expressions. We just want everybody to be safe doing it and we want to be able to manage it safely. And that's my abbreviated version of the presentation, sir.
Well done. Thank you, Captain. Don't go too far. Um, we will now proceed to the second, second study session, public comment period. The second study session, public comment period is now beginning and no additional cards or calls will be accepted. Uh, Ms. Clark, how many public comment cards or calls do we have? Ms. Clark, your voice sounded a little different there.
Excuse me, that would be one.
Okay. And any calls?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. I'll let that one slide this once. All right. Um, one comment card, David Donahue, based on the number of comment cards, you have three minutes, sir, and time will begin uh whenever you start.
Thank you, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, council managers and staff. Uh, my only comment into the presentation was, is there any ability to be able to prohibit face coverings in the event of potential violence or altercations? Oftentimes it has been seen that perpetrators are covering their face with any type of device. And so that makes prosecution a lot more difficult. I understand that not having any of these things in their possession, but there are times when referring to the Glendale incident where people actually came with what looked like body armor. They were ready to battle, they had knee pads, elbow pads, gloves on, helmets, and they were ready to fight. And so I guess my question um to the council is if if there could be any sort of identification or if there's any sort of ability to sort of prohibit face coverings if it just looks like, hey, you guys are just going to rumble. So let's just make sure we can identify the perpetrators. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, there being no further in-person public comment or callers on the line, uh, the second study session, public comment period is now complete. Captain Corneals, you're you're not required to, but if you do have any brief response to public comment, we certainly invite that. Okay. Okay. Uh, Mr. McDougald.
Yeah, uh, just to respond to Mr. Donahue's comment, um, given what the entire uh world has been through, uh, and people's uh differing levels of concern over um contracting illness and face coverings, as well as people who wear them for religious purposes, um, that could be something uh that we have to examine to make sure that we're not um prohibiting people from protecting their health or prohibiting people from wearing face coverings that they believe uh is in accord with their religious beliefs.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. McDougal. Um, colleagues, this is a joint session, so as last time, I'd like to start with the police commission. Um, should any of you have any questions or comments, this would be the appropriate time. Chair Coombs, if I can deputize you, if there's any of your of your colleagues, I'd like to begin. Let me know.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And for the record, we have Commissioner Elman approaching.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Excuse the dark glasses, but had an eye appointment before, uh, because my eye was, I couldn't see the monitor that well. My question is frozen water bottles. Uh, I have seen them in prior protests being thrown in other cities. Uh, just wonder know if this ordinance considers frozen water bottles.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, Captain, if you have an answer, that'd be much appreciated.
We need to refer to my notes. I believe this mostly addresses glass and not frozen. As it currently stands, this appears to only address glass bottles.
Okay.
And not something frozen in plastic.
I suppose as a brief follow-up to the commissioner's question, um, you mentioned that the impetus for the ordinance was BPD's involvement with the uh altercation of sorts in the city of Glendale. In that incident, were there any issues, not saying that couldn't happen, but in that specific instance, were there any issues with frozen water bottles? Or are you aware of any incident where frozen plastic water bottles have been used as a weapon of sorts?
Not in the Glendale incident, not that I'm aware of.
More broadly?
More broadly, I I am aware of there have been demonstrations where they have been pre-staged or or thrown, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Captain. Um, Chair Coombs, back to you. Anyone else have a question over there? Great. Commissioner Faruzan.
Hello again, and thank you for the presentation. Um, I just have, it's more of a clarifying question. I think you kind of alluded to it um with the Glendale example of how they approached enforcement and, you know, balancing the, you know, trying to be proactive about safety at demonstrations and protests, balancing with um people's, you know, First Amendment rights. And so just, if you can clarify a bit about how Burbank would approach enforcement, right? So is it something where if someone's visibly carrying one of these items, would there be, um, you know, may not even be like logistically possible, you know, like searching everybody who enters, you know, the perimeter of the, you know, and that would probably, you know, could conceivably have, you know, a dampening effect on people's, you know, wanting to join the protest and things like that. So just wondering if you could speak to that, the logistics of it. Thank you.
So speaking to logistics of enforcement, again, primarily this is educational. We're going to have signs, we're going to have officers posted to observe the crowd, people as they come to join. We're going to be looking at things in plain view. We are not searching every person who comes to a protest or demonstration. Uh, we are looking for prohibited items in plain view and that would be a cause to contact somebody and redirect them. With that being said, it's also, like we discussed earlier, shrinking the target. I recognize that people may carry things in in a bag and concealed, in a concealed manner into the demonstration area. Again, if we see something produced in plain view, that's going to give us cause to go contact that person. Again, we're looking for compliance uh with with the ordinance and based on our interaction with them is going to determine what the next step is going to be. If they are willing to depart with the item, then by all means, we want them to depart with the item and come back.
Thank you very much, Captain.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah, and that's kind of where I thought you was, I just wanted to.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you for the question. Chair Coombs, any other questions from the commission?
Yeah, uh, is this question and comment or just question?
I'll accept both, question or comment.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So um, thank you, Captain Corneals, for the presentation both tonight and and last week, actually. I got a chance to watch the video and I know there was, there was some extensive conversation discussion that took place last week. Particularly, I really appreciated the in-depth discussion around pepper spray and when somebody would be searched for pepper spray and when that pepper spray would be deployed, it it really helped provide some context. Um, as far as the uh a frozen water bottle is concerned, I'm grateful that they don't allow frozen water bottles into the Rose Bowl, so I can imagine that this might be something that might be consistent here. Um, I'm also recalling from the presentation last week, the um, the spirit versus the letter of the law in terms of how this is being implemented. Um, my understanding is that this is being implemented to be um, to be proactive, to try to prevent um an escalated incident from taking place in the first place. So I'm appreciating that. Um, I've got some notes, but I'm going to jump around a little bit. Um, first thing I wanted to bring up was just, um, thank you for inviting us, by the way, to um, to invite us to weigh in on this and and continue to this week. This actually comes up when I, when I started my report earlier, I was talking about the uh, the ordinance, the 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 city code that that gives the police commission the the structure of what we do. One of the things that I appreciated was, um, in watching last week's video and in tonight, was that the the presentation was really to try to help the department address an issue immediately. Um, and as as we're all aware, this, the police commission doesn't have the ability to to enact any kind of a um, any kind of an ordinance or a code, but it really happens with with the city council. And it's not, it's not to, it's not to defer, but if there's, if there's an issue that needs to be addressed immediately, I would much rather that the police department address an ordinance issue with the city council first rather than wait to the next month or to try to get it agendized for a future month. So I just wanted to lift that up as a, as a, as a technical issue. Um, I'd also like to, um, we haven't, as a commission, had the opportunity to receive a presentation and have any discussion with each other, so we're kind of doing it in real time right now. So if if this were a commission meeting and we were sitting on the dais right now, um, I know what I would be doing is I would be reflecting back on other areas that I work in to to try to understand why this ordinance is so important right now. Um, as you're all aware, I work for Public Mental Health and there's a couple of things that we're involved in in Public Mental Health right now. One of them, uh, we had the recent fires and so folks are aware of the devastation that that caused. And one of the things that our department does with other departments is prepare in advance in the event of an incident. We're not necessarily going to use it, but we want to be prepared in advance. So we try to project out into the future. It's fire season, what staff are going to be responding to, um, to shelters, that type of a thing, how are we going to respond? So so I understand the importance of thinking about it in advance. Another thing that my department is doing, that I'm doing specifically in the community that I work with, it's around, and I want to, I want to be very upfront about it, it's about the upcoming election and it's about the tension that the communities are experiencing related to the upcoming election. And I'm not talking about Burbank's specific implementation of this, but I'm talking about the work that we're doing right now to protect vulnerable communities who are feeling already at risk from racial tension, from, from, from cultural tension, from economic tension that they're experiencing in the community. And we're expecting that to build up into and through the election, all the way into January. So in the public mental health system, we're trying to prepare in advance for what we foresee may potentially come up and how we can support the community in that. So in that sense, I'm really, I'm appreciating the the police department's bringing this up as an ordinance to, is an exigent issue to address as soon as possible because they want to be as prepared as possible for the future as well. So I just wanted to lift up and express my appreciation for it being brought up last week. I do not personally have any concerns about it being brought up directly to the city council first, and I do appreciate the council's interest, particularly um, uh, Councilmember Anthony, uh, Councilmember Mullins and and Mayor Schultz in in wanting to to move that
Councilmember Mullins, and Mayor Schultz, in wanting to move that discussion to this week so we can have that discussion together. But I just wanted to express my support for this and for the advanced planning that the department is doing. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Chair Coombs. Unless there's any other question or comment from the commission, seeing none, colleagues, who'd like to begin? Councilmember Anthony.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. I wanted to ask the commission members, did any of you watch the meeting from two weeks ago when we discussed this? Were you able to go through and see our comments previous to that? Okay. Two weeks, it was last week.
It just feels like two weeks ago.
My gosh. Yes.
For the record, I'm noticing several raised hands and nodding heads. Sounds like, not all, but most of the commission probably did.
All right, I just wanted to be sure that those comments were heard, so thank you. That's all.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Yes?
I just have a question regarding the frozen water bottle. I mean, that could be deadly if it's thrown at somebody's face, I think. I'm not an expert, but would that something we would consider? I haven't heard that one before.
I would consider it.
Okay.
It did not make it into the text of this proposed ordinance.
Right. I know, and we didn't discuss it.
I'm not sure if there would be some challenges to enforcement determining what's frozen and what's not.
Okay.
Until something's manipulated. So that may be a reason that it doesn't appear in some ordinances, and the challenges of identifying that specifically.
Okay. I just heard, I think, I think, yeah, Commissioner Coombs saying that they prohibit that at the Rose Bowl events. So I don't know how they do it. It's something maybe to work, to look at and see, how do they identify it, how they prohibit it? Because it does make sense, that could be really, it's like a brick.
I agree.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilmember, sorry, I didn't mean to downrate you there. All right, Councilmember Takahashi, anything to add?
Quickly, quickly. Thank you for presenting this again for our police commission, for our community. I just wanted to reflect on what Commissioner Coombs was saying about, thank you so much for relaying that you are, your position that it's appropriate for it to come to us first before the police commission or directly to us, and I appreciate that partnership. It probably won't happen again very soon, but if and when it does happen again, where an item comes like this to us from police-related, it would be great if we could invite the police commission to attend that meeting, at least to be present, and then we'd have the opportunity to ask questions to them if we wanted to, that they're here and they're aware of it, just so that we can make sure that they're in the loop. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor, anything to add?
Yeah, I would just concur with that, Councilmember Takahashi. It's great to hear from the commission, your thoughts, your questions. Clearly, we didn't think about frozen water bottles before one of you all asked it, and I'm very comfortable with that, too, because if it's banned at the Rose Bowl at a sporting event, much like the Dodger game analogy. The only thing I will add is thank you for the flyer. Kudos to you all, that was a great flyer. Love the picture, love the I love Burbank sign in there. And I think it's clear and helpful to folks. I don't think there's any room for misunderstanding what is allowed and what is not allowed, what is encouraged, and what is very much restricted to bring to a protest. So thank you for making that, and I can't wait to see that QR code working.
All right, thank you, colleagues. I'll offer a very brief response, and then as a reminder, we will need a motion. If there's any amendments to make, you can make it in the course of your motion, but tonight we have a potential adoption of the ordinance to be considered. I just wanted to say to Chair Coombs, I definitely appreciate your comments and your perspective. You know, on the issue of the frozen water bottle as referenced by Commissioner Elman, I completely see the rationale for it, and I'm not saying I wouldn't support a motion that included that, but I will say that, you know, in recent memory, we've seen a lot of protests at the height of summer with 100 and plus degree days, and so I also can see where somebody would want to bring a frozen water bottle for staying refreshed and cool. And so, you know, where do you draw the line? You know, I could bring my thermos and use that as a weapon, too, and so there will always be, to Captain Cornelius', you know, argument, there's always the potential that something can be made into or utilized as a weapon. I am comfortable with the ordinance as is and contemplated by the department, but I did want to acknowledge that there is that perspective, that the Rose Bowl has made a different policy decision, and that's certainly not an unreasonable one to make. And then the last thing is, I just wanted to say, Captain Cornelius, thank you for bringing it back. Glad that we can involve our police commission in this way. Their feedback is important to us. So that's all I have, colleagues. Does anyone have a motion that they'd like to make? Yes, Councilmember?
So before we make a full motion on this, I would like to get temperature-wise on council's thoughts. Based on Commissioner Faruzan's questions, if you could look at the ordinance, we have it on attachment 2-1, just letter C. The ordinance reads, "Adopting an updated ordinance would enable Burbank Police Department to take proactive measures." Coming down to the second sentence, it says, "If prohibited items are identified during a demonstration, officers would have the authority to intervene and remove these items or individuals before tensions escalate into violence." I'd like to see if council would be okay adding three words, seeing if prohibited items are identified in plain view during a demonstration. And I'm not going to make any motions now to change the ordinance, I would like to bring it later. I'm just pointing it out now while we're all here, and I'd like to get, if the commission is okay with it, if Captain Kremins thinks that it doesn't hinder in any way, later on tonight, I'm going to be bringing up those three words. So it's a simple change on letter C of the ordinance, second sentence, "If prohibited items are identified in plain view during a demonstration." And I think that would still satisfy the basis of the ordinance, but also gives us a little bit more understanding that we're not going through and searching everybody and having folks be systematically stopped. That's just my concern. So I'll be bringing that up later during the full adoption in the next meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember. I do want to just clarify my mistake, this is just a presentation, we will be voting on this agenda item on consent, so this is the perfect time for dialogue, and then when we do make the motion to adopt consent, any revisions, you can just bake that into your motion at that point. Councilmember Mullins?
I just wanted to clarify, you want to add "in plain view," so it's visible to the officers to see there is something in their hand. However, and please clarify this, last week when we discussed it, is there anything under reasonable suspicious, or if somebody is hiding under their coat and you can't see it, like a baseball bat, and you suspect, or you have intel that tells you this person is carrying a weapon, can you at that time search them? So how is that going to change your ability to actually stop somebody that could be carrying a weapon that would hurt somebody?
It may. As case law currently stands, if we have somebody that we believe is, has committed or is about to commit a crime, and there are some specific articulable circumstances that give us reasonable suspicion that that person is armed, whether that's a visible bulge on their waistband, whether that's some other information that we've received or developed, that gives us reasonable suspicion to detain that person, also gives us reasonable suspicion to pat them down for said weapon. If we're restricting this to only plain view at all times, that may be problematic. If somebody reports to us that somebody has a baseball bat, for instance, in the crowd, and we see that person, they have a very obvious bulge under their jacket or in their waistband, that would preclude us from taking action until that item was produced. I would reference that my concern for plain view is mostly the people coming in, but it could be very, to limit it just to plain view, plain view would be very restrictive in our enforcement ability.
And Councilmember, just to piggyback off of the captain's response, which I thought was well done, I completely understand and appreciate the perspective of including those three words, "in plain view." The unintended consequence could be that you are now changing the impetus of whether, are we prohibiting an item, or simply prohibit it being carried in plain view? The way I could see that change playing out is there is an implication that it's a completely acceptable item to have there, unless and until you carry it in plain view, whereas I believe the impetus of this ordinance is that there are certain items that can be used as a weapon and simply shouldn't be at these demonstrations to begin with. So it's a policy choice. I just wanted to highlight that there could be a significant, either intended or unintended consequences with the inclusion of that language.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's why I wanted the captain to clarify it, because that could really have a complete different impact on what they're trying to really accomplish by bringing this ordinance and having that discussion we had last week, because they're doing it for an intent and a purpose with any type of suspicious that they may have. Yes, they may ask somebody to be searched if they have the reasonable suspicious, or if they have some information that this person could be carrying a weapon. So as you heard him, I think it can cause some other concerns and issues for the officers.
It would actually abrogate the common law on pat-down searches. You would actually be erasing law that applies to carrying a concealed weapon without a permit with that language.
Which could have a boatload of other...
Well, I would recommend, I would strongly recommend against such an amendment.
I'm so glad you're here, Joe. Always appreciate you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. In addition to everything that's been said, I also appreciate where you're coming from, but I think to the point of Captain Neill, as you said it several times, we're trying to be proactive, not reactive. Adding "in plain view" can also, I know you mean it in a positive way to prevent, but it can also be construed as waiting till brandishing, which takes us right back to square one, if not square negative one, which is being reactive. So I think our goal is to give our department the tools to have educational enforcement. Our goal is that nothing happens. Our goal is to prevent, and I think if we can give them the tools to do that, let's do that.
Any other commentary? No? Okay. I will just simply close with saying thank you to Captain Cornelius for bringing this back, and I just want to echo something that one of my colleagues said. At the last meeting, there was a question posed of why now? I actually, to the point that several folks have made in the last week that I've spoken to about this, there is a lot of angst and concern about the national mood, the consequences of the election. We've seen already this year increased political violence resulting in an assassination attempt twice on a major presidential candidate, and I support our department in doing everything that we can do to keep our community safe while also balancing respect for the First Amendment and the right to organize. So thank you for your work on this. Look forward to seeing you all back here in about five minutes. With that, we are now going to convene, sorry, to conclude the special meeting of the council. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back, ready to start our regular meeting. The council stands in recess.